...on our agenda item. Item A, public hearings, disclosure of collective bargaining agreements. The public hearing will be held concerning the public disclosure of proposed collective bargaining agreements between the Pedaluma City Elementary and Pedaluma Joint Union High School Districts and the Federation of Teachers, Local 1881 CFT/AFT, California Employees School Association, Pedaluma Chapter 212, Pedaluma Confidential Employee, Pedaluma Leadership Association. Do we have anybody here to speak? I have two speaker cards. Do we have anybody? Please bring your speaker card up and hand them to... And please hand it to Ms. Merrill and she'll pass it to you. The first one I have was Ms. Amy Malaise. You want to speak in favor of all day kindergarten. And since that's part of a tentative agreement, would you please come speak?
Thank you very much. I'm Amy Malaise and I am the mother of an incoming PCS kindergartner and then also the archivist at Santa Rosa Junior College. And my son has been attending and all day architecturally focused preschool from 8:30 to 3:30 since he was two o'clock. And I've seen tremendous benefits from this experience for him. And I've been doing a lot of research on studies that have been done on full-day kindergarten programs. Excuse me. And one of the things I've seen is that full-day kindergarten classes have been showing greater reading and mathematic achievement gains than those in half-day classes. In fact, the reading activities and skills were typically considered more advanced than those that are in the half-day kindergarten curriculum. Another thing that I think is really wonderful is that a full day would, pardon me, enable teachers to have time to explore other subjects that are commonly in the half-day curriculum and to give more in-depth instruction. Full-day kindergarten can also produce long-term educational gains, especially for low-income and minority students. In fact, it often helps to close the achievement gap between those students and traditional students. Teachers have more time to get to know kids and identify and address their learning challenges early, and the teachers feel less rushed because they have more time to be with the kids and get to know them. It also allows for increased learning activities and strategies such as group reading aloud, peer tutoring, mixed ability grouping, and child initiated activities. And as a result of this, tends to result in higher test scores. It also improves children in terms of higher social skills. It offers social, emotional, and intellectual benefits to them, giving them more time to focus and reflect on activities and transition between them, which I think is extremely important for children of this age. They often have difficulty with transitions. And just having the time to sort of settle into your day and move from one thing to another, I think is highly beneficial. These children exhibit more independent learning, classroom involvement, and productivity and work with peers and reflectiveness than half-day kindergartners. And in a study by David Hoss on the effects of full-day kindergarten on student achievement and effect, he found that full-day students showed no increase in their levels of fatigue. So as a parent, I want the most that my child can possibly get out of kindergarten program. I want him to be there more, not less. I've seen the teachers in the program at the school my son will be attending, and I want him to soak up as much as he possibly can. So as a parent, I just want to be able to tell you about my opinion and the opinion of several of my friends who couldn't be here tonight. And we're hoping for a full-day kindergarten for our children so that they can receive these benefits. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Okay, our next speaker would be Colleen Maloney.
Good evening. Do I need to talk to the camera first and then...
If you like, I mean...
The last time I stood up here, I had to do the whole "Hi, I'm Colleen Maloney" and...
Well, if you usually have a pretty good side profile going, they'll just go side profile.
Okay, great. Well, good evenings for members and supporters of enrollment and charm and goodness and apparel, the audience. I am here as a PFT president, but I'm also a teacher and a negotiator. And I have taught in this district since 1987 as both a special education and regular education teacher. I'm presently a sixth grade teacher at Pengrove School and I'm not currently in the union president hat, but tonight I have my president hat. The Pedaluma Federation of Teachers, representing all of the teachers in the district, believe that we need to get back to the bargaining table as soon as possible in order to make absolutely sure that we restore the full instructional year and maximize instruction for our students in our classrooms and schools. We believe that there are still some stumbling blocks, such as the implementation of certain technology and proposals to increases in instructional minutes that are best decided at schools in collaboration with teachers' parents and site administrators. For at least four years, teachers have willingly given up compensation so that best quality programs for children could be maintained. Now, there has been a turnaround in school funding in the state, and now is the time to restore those cuts as well as discuss a reason for it. We recommend that you encourage the district bargaining team to return to the bargaining table as our membership has directed our bargaining team to do. The Pedaluma Federation of Teachers has a history of positive labor relations with district management, and we are committed to maintaining this relationship. Once again, the union feels that the quickest and best way to resolve the current differences is to return to the bargaining table and to begin working on them together. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Beth Cohen.
Hi. I'm Mary Beth Cohen and I'm also on the executive council of the Pedaluma Federation of Teachers. And I'm a teacher at McMurial Elementary School. I have been for the past seventeen years. And first of all, I'd just like to stand in support of all the comments made by our PFT president, Colleen, and refer to some specific points in the contract. One thing that members are particularly concerned about is the Ares grade book system. Teachers fully support parent access via computer to student grades and progress and so forth. What we want to make sure is that all the bugs have been worked out of the system and that we will truly be providing a platform to parents and teachers that is useful. Another point is that in the teacher evaluation system, we feel that the committee who is in charge of that evaluation system has not yet fully defined what the process will be. So we would like to postpone piloting that until the committee has finished its work. I, as a kindergarten teacher, am asking the district, and this is also the PFT stance, that they allow each elementary site to determine the alignment structure of their kindergarten day. I certainly respect the need for care as a social issue. There are points and research for and against the appropriateness of a full-day program. And even such associations as the National Education Association, which supports a full-day program, says that to have a really quality program, you should have no more than fifteen students to one teacher. For every ten students, you should have an instructional assistant. So I think that if we as a district really take time to create a well-fought-out program and a program that has the proper support, then we will be doing what is best for the students. Additionally, we'd like to consider cost of living adjustments, since we've had no such adjustments since 2007. It's probably kind of nervous. Anyway, so we, I just want you to understand that we teachers are just as concerned as you school board members. We're creating absolutely the best instructional program that we can. And what we believe is that if we all work together and we take the expertise of the teachers, the administrators, the parents, and the community, that is how we're going to come up with the best thing. So we teachers are committed to working on this contract agreement and making it something that can support all of us and providing the best possible education to students. And so we ask the board to urge the district to return to negotiations and work with us.
Sandra Lawson.
Hi, my name is Sandra Lawson and I just finished teaching this my twentieth year in the district. I currently am a second grade teacher at Valley Vista, but in my career that began in the eighth grade, I taught second, fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade in the twenty years. I will serve as a treasurer for PFT beginning next year, so I am too supporting the remarks that Colleen made. I'm also the parent of three adult children who have the benefit of a quality education from Pedaluma City School. I'm a grandmother too, so if you'll see cute pictures I can show you after. But that's beside the point. I'm here tonight to ask you to give direction for all direction to return to the bargaining table to negotiate a deal that will benefit the children of Pedaluma. The students of Pedaluma City Schools deserve a full instructional year. I know that you've been talking about the implementation of Common Core in regard regarding mathematics standards next year. If this is done without staff development, the students will not get the content they deserve. Implementing programs such as Ares without established protocols and procedures or the necessary professional input will not serve our students as intended. And definitely the same can be said for all day kindergarten. The committee that's been working on teacher evaluation has worked hard in creating an evaluation that we can all benefit from, especially the students. Rushing into implementation will only weaken it. The accordion process needs to have continued. The committee needs to be given time to create the evaluation before it's put into a contract. Finally, the teachers of Pedaluma City Schools have taken pay cuts for seven, last seven years. Each time we've been asked, we've said yes. And now we're returning to the 2007 pay scale. The cost of living has risen since 2007. Teachers are members of the community, parents, we have obligations as well. I trust that we can work out an agreement with all parties returning to the negotiating table. A contract that recognizes teachers as professionals will ensure prepared involvement and student success and give the students of Pedaluma the education they deserve. Thank you.
Thank you. If you could hold your applause, I don't want to turn into a fanfare. That's just big, didn't quite about it. Carol Anne Street.
Hi, my name is Carol Street and I'm a seventh grade teacher at Pedaluma Junior High School. I teach pre- algebra, accelerated pre- algebra, and a support class for students who need extra help. I have seven adult children who graduated from the Pedaluma City Schools. I'm here because I want the best, what's best for my kids. I agree with everything Colleen said. I voted no on tentative agreement because the Ares grade book will significantly impact my time and keep me from really communicating live with my parents and my students. The program is inferior to the one I use now. When I came to the first training session and asked to learn how to run the four reports that I use the most, I was told that the trainer would contact Ares and see if they could develop those four sheets in their program. I want to spend time interacting with my children, not fighting with a computer program. Please direct the negotiating team to return to the bargaining table.
Thank you. Susan Gavin. We'll have you speak like we did the first speaker because you're speaking on full-day kindergarten, so you're speaking at this time.
Evening, Susan Gavin. I'm Karen and I have a child. I didn't have childcare this evening, but a child is about to enter kindergarten in a fall. I have about two decades' worth of experience in the field of working on children. I'm a licensed marriage and family therapist. I also have a background of parents who were educators and school administrators, and my mother used to be because she worked at the principal of Liberty in the seventies and eighties. I have a little bit of experience coming with its life, running the school system, working on prom pics, working in special education and in public education, non-public schools and public schools, and watching my own child develop and grow. And the last three years, she's been in a full-day kindergarten, preschool, I should say, she started kindergarten. And it hasn't been childcare or daycare or play care. It's been a full academic day, like a three morning or two-three, where she's had a full, in-depth experience of being able to progress academically in a full day. And so, you know, I bring information, as maybe some other people already have tonight, that is a combination of research and report and statistics from the National Education Foundation, the Children's Defense Fund, the National Institute for Early Education, the National Center for Education, Early Child Research Quarterly, Educational Commission of the States, and there are many, many more. But I've just pulled a few statements from some of those organizations. And so I'm really here to talk about the social, emotional requirements about full-day K. It offers social, emotional, and intellectual benefits to kindergartners and providing them a lot more time throughout a full day to focus a little bit more on their activities and transition between them. Five-year-olds, I believe, are more than ready for longer school day. And to better the setting, it allows them time to learn and explore activities in depth. Research definitely shows that there are higher social skills and more independent learning, and children in all-day kindergarten have been seen to be more engaged in child-to-child interactions and make significant higher progress in learning social skills. And those children experience more independent learning and classroom involvement and productivity, working with peers. There have been focus words in research that show teachers have preferred full-day K and that they were feeling less stressed by time constraints. And those teachers have had more time and opportunity to get to know children, meet their needs, and just see them develop a little bit more. And parents have also been seen in these studies. In a 2000 study, 100% of full-day parents and 72% of half-day parents in the day have given the opportunity again, they would have chosen full-day kindergarten for their child. And what that kind of shows to me is, just as I was, as a parent, a little reluctant to take my child from that nap time during the day, it took someone else to give me a little bit of push to be open to some change and to give her the opportunity to try a full-day without a nap, and she grew up such a schooling. And I think part of that says to me is, we can give our children opportunities to see what happens. You can always change things later. I grew up in full-day pre and full-day K. I grew up in Japan and I seemed to get through this well. It might have been a little tiring for me maybe the first couple of weeks, but then when I was ready to start first grade, when I came to the United States, I hadn't been prepared for a full-day K opportunity. So I'm hoping, you are the change managers here, you get to be the ones to make decisions, and I understand there are very difficult decisions, and sometimes you're making decisions that are not popular. But you get to make some important decisions in the future, so please think about that, okay?
Thank you. Doug Emmery.
Good evening to the board and this administration. My name is Doug Emmery. I've been teaching for a few years here. It's 26, I don't know. And right now, I'm teaching at Valley Vista School, a wonderful place. I feel very supported, very supported by the site manager. And I just, you know, long before these four Cs came into being, that we've been talking a lot about, actually as an administration and as teachers, this administration was extremely collaborative. And we prided ourselves of being collaborative with the teachers. And we ourselves as teachers, we pride ourselves as being extremely collaborative with each other. This has gone on for a long time. In fact, most of our, all our contracts, I've been here for 26 years, have been approved by the members. This time, we came up short, very short, by an overwhelming amount. We've been very communicative too. We've been very communicative as teachers. We've done our best. And we do our best with students and with the administration and with each other. And we pride ourselves in that. But mostly because of authentic communication. A communication that's real makes a difference with parents and kids. We try not to enable, we try to wean the kids in the younger age from any kind of enabling that is not healthy in their habits and their study. And as they go further along, they should be, they should be independent and not have to worry about so much about finding out what their grade is by the hour. So, you know, there's something to be said for authentic communication of your parents, for those of you that are. I think you can appreciate that. You don't need to always be there and always be on, and otherwise they don't become as independent as you wish them to be. Now, this result of the no vote by the membership, PFT membership, the last two, critical thinking and creativity, the last of the four Cs, I should say, it really suggests that we need to all put our thinking caps back on and get creative. This isn't the best we can do at PCS. So I'm going to encourage the board to further encourage the administration to come back to the table to work things out so that your teachers are happy, your students are happy, that parents are happy, and we have successful learners. Okay? Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have any other speakers? Okay, so we'll close that matter and we can go to the second public hearing matter, the naming of facility. Do we have any speakers on that? Okay, so now a public hearing will be held in the C P U D court regarding the proposed naming of Pedaluma High School tennis courts in memory of Sarah Watts, who was a late Pedaluma High School teacher and tennis coach. So we have no speakers? Okay. So we'll move on to item M. That's the adoption and approval of the agenda. I am going to request that we change A five to a whole. So, okay, is that a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? So on our agenda, we're going to change A five and make that a whole line. Okay? So, we go on to G.
Could we make a motion to approve that?
Oh, I'm sorry. Listen, now I get rid of the next one. Make a motion, I would like a motion now to approve the modified agenda. All in favor? So we'll go to item G for special recommendations and presentations. G one, Rich Hoffman, our chief business official, provided a report on the 2012-2015 tentative budget.
Thank you. Well, as I'm waiting for the screen to come up, I'll share a little bit with you that there was a, working over the weekend and an agreement with the governor and a select group of legislative folks to come to an understanding about where the funding for next year's budget will go. And, thank you. And so there's been some changes and updates, and some of this came really late. You'll see most of the actual incorporation of the actual figures into the adopted budgets.
Rich, you can't hear that wall back here.
Okay.
Thank you.
So they hammered out the agreement late yesterday. The full legislature is to take this up later this week. And the plan to phase in this new funding formula has increased from seven to eight years. So now, instead of a full implementation of this funding formula being 2019-20, it's going to be 2020-21. Okay, if that makes any... Yes, there we go. So, and that, that amount is to fully get back to the '07-'08 levels plus, you know, the new funding targets. So full implementation, again, not to be seen until 2020-21. One of the significant changes that they made was shifting $3 billion into the base funding. What I shared with you the last time was there were three components of the funding, actually several others, but there was going to be a new base funding per ADA. Then on top of that, there was a K3 class size reduction element. There was a high school element for CTE, career tech ed. Then on top of that, there was an additional element for supplemental funding, and that had to do with socio-economically disadvantaged students and English language learners. And then there was, on top of that, a concentration factor. Our district is not even eligible for the concentration factor, so I'm not going to get into that. But in the original proposal, it was, there would be a 35% additional amount of the base funding provided for each EL/SED student. Now that's been kind of flipped a little bit, they're going to increase the base. They're going to increase the base level of funding so that more districts benefit from getting back to a higher level of funding and flipping it so that there's a little bit less going to the SED/EL kids. Ultimately, it winds out to be about the same amount dollar-wise because you inflated the base grant. So this is significant in that way. And this is really important for Pedaluma, the high school district, because after I went back and fine-tuned what we would be getting for next year, it was only going to be about $79 additional per ADA. Well, that would only equate to about a .94% increase for the high school level funding. So one of the things they're saying is, I'm out, that's really not okay. That's not even giving us the cost of living increase. So, and this is largely because we participate in a lot of the categorical funding and also because our seventh grade, 7A, is funded at the high school level and not the elementary level. So the high school district will get a little bit, actually more funding under this model, and it's going to be referred to as the economic recovery payment. So it's not because of our SED/EL kids. They're just going to give more so that we get back up to the '07-'08 funding level a little bit sooner. And I'll show you a diagram in a bit. Yes.
But the '07-'08 level isn't going to happen until 2020-21.
Yes.
But this, this is like, shows some of that recovery to next year, I suppose, spreading out.
Right, right. So, the new agreement did not address the local control funding formula accountability component that we talked about the last time, which is developing the local... that we talked about the last time, which is developing the local control... I'm sorry, I just lost my acronym. Accountability spending plan. There will be a plan requirement. And again, they were talking about making that a five-year plan with updates every year occurring simultaneously at budget adoption. It will be addressed later in the trailer bill language. It's yet to be determined. The other thing that happened in this agreement is that the one time, in other words, we're only getting this money one time, Common Core Standards Funding increased from $1 billion to $1.25 billion in this agreement. And so that was, that's a benefit because there's a lot of need in that. And that money is, can only be used for instructional materials, technology, and staff training. Okay? The one thing that went the other way, which we thought was, we applauded, the $60 million in specialized backfill for, because of the federal sequestration, that was taken out. I don't know if that's a mistake or if it's really zero. It's zero. They've taken that back. So that'll be a swing going the other way. Last time I showed you this slide, this looked a little bit different in that that gap between the yellow and the green line was smaller. And actually, in our year 15-16, this yellow line, which is the local control funding formula, actually exceeded. Well, when I went back, I fine-tuned the numbers and redid this scenario. And this came true of what we believed to be, to begin with, was that this local control funding formula doesn't keep pace with our current revenue process, where we have revenue limit in categoricals. So this revenue, the economic recovery payment, is going to help close this gap. So this, they don't have the new software up yet to show what this would look like. So all I can do is share that this gap will get smaller. And I don't know, I don't know if we will ever exceed this bar here in the out-years in 2021. But again, we'll have to see. Let's see. So just a few minutes ago, I shared with you that after correcting the initial, we wouldn't see $108 per ADA at the high school level. We would only be seeing 79. This corrects it to be about $222 per ADA. So we'll see. I don't have enough information, very, very little information at this point. For the elementary funding, you can see here's the 2012-13. You can see that the local control funding formula is very close to what our current legal financing tool is at this point. So in 2013-14, it's slightly below. And then in 14-15, this model is showing that the local control funding formula would exceed it just by a bit. And then by the time you get to 2015-16, it would really exceed. But you have to remember that the elementary district only accounts for about 25% to 30% of our revenue limit. And our secondary year is about 70%. So you're looking at 70% of our money being here, okay? So what I want to show you in this comparison is, this is where our funding level looks like in this year. And this is total, total. This includes our revenue limit. It includes our tier three categoricals. It includes transportation, economic impact aid, and the TIG dollars, the Targeted Instruction Improvement Slaughtering. So elementary is being currently funded at $6,177. And our high school district is at $7,148. If you were to look at what we would get under our revenue limit for next year if we stayed with our current funding model, this would be including getting an additional COLA and getting a decrease in the deficit factor, going from over 77%?
Yeah, it's at 18%.
Yeah, yeah. It's going down to 18%. So right now, it's at 22.272. It would be going to, down to 18%. This is where our funding would look like. We would be at $6,706 per student. And the high school district would be at $7,551. Well, this is not what we're going to see. This is going to that chart showing you what we would be seeing. Under the local control funding formula, we would be going from $6,177 to $6,385. And the high school district, $7148 to $7370. So the new agreement does not provide me with enough information to project that beyond 13-14 at this point. The other thing that's not clear is whether or not, the main revise has said that the transportation and TIG grant would remain outside of the local control funding formula. That's been silent, but yet when I plug in all of those numbers to get those charts and those other numbers, they're including those dollar amounts in that funding formula. So I can't tell if that's on top of or whether or not it's going to be lumped into. The supplemental and concentration grant are being funded based on district-wide SED/EL and are not being funded based on school site. And the governor is very clear on that. He's not budgeting for that. We as a district need to make the local decisions about funneling those dollars to our, for example, our media sites like McAllen, McKinley, that have 98% SED/EL students to serve. So we won't be seeing that concentration grant at that level. And finally, there's no change in the ending balance trends at this point. And I didn't include them because I have to go rework some of the numbers. And like I said, I don't have enough information to do the out-years. The adopted budget will be presented to you on June 25th with the new proposed financial information incorporated into that. There will be a vote by the respective floors prior to midnight on June 15th. June 15th is Saturday, so we'll see about that. And trailer bill language is not subject to that deadline. So the requirements that they're talking about were any refining information about the funding and how it's going to happen. If it's coming in the trailer bill, we won't know about that until June 27th, which is a Friday. Is that a Thursday?
Thursday.
Yeah.
But we meet the Tuesday before.
But we meet, we will be adopting our budget on the 25th. So that will come even after. So there could be some changes even after that, depending on what gets hammered out there. That's about it.
I want to give a comment for those here and the audience at home. Some of you are probably aware that the state of California has, is in the process of changing how they fund schools. And part of the problem is they aren't all in agreement, by surprise. And so what Mitch has presented is trying to help us come up with a budget for next year. Our tentative one that we discussed at the last meeting or two ago was based on the existing funding formula, the revenue limit plus categoricals. And now this one, she's trying to, it sounds like the governor and the legislature are going to go forward with this local control funding formula, which is really, not really local control. But that's what they like to call it, which clearly is, you know, not going to be very transparent for, from going forward into many years. So I just want everybody to be aware of the decisions that are being made. Things will constantly be changing with our budget because the state keeps changing everything. I'll be able to change the budget here, so.
I'd like to add one more thing. I'd like people to remember that over these last five years, which have been excruciatingly difficult, we cut over $11 million, $11 million in this budget. This budget for 13-14 is only adding back maybe $1.3 million. That's not going to get us back to where we were in '07-'08. It's very little dollars. And a lot of the calculations are being done behind the scene. I really don't have a way to prove or disprove the calculations that they're making for us. I'm just going off a very sketchy program that's providing, you know, a number to us. This is what you're going to get funded for next year. Well, that remains to be seen, so.
And I also wanted to mention the deficit factor, which is one of those confusing descriptors of our budget for the last, since 2007-8. The cost of living increase hasn't been given to the district. And so it's been building. And the state owes the district 22%. So we've been getting 78 cents on the dollar. And based on what they agreed to this weekend, we won't be getting that 22% next year or the following year, but not until 2020-21. So just to make sure that's very clear, that they're taking a really long time to pay that back.
Thank you, Mitch.
Steve, I don't know if you wanted to add to any of that?
No, I just, you know, the last meeting, we did see the alligator chart as a call.
Oh, I think you would, did you want to see the alligator chart? I think I can find that.
So I think that's pretty cool because it does, it does show the fact that the district is not back to the '07-'08 levels and will not be back to that level next year.
I suspect the reality is we won't be back to that level.
We are, yeah. At one time, we had, for one year, we had a $7 million budget and then it went down to 66% and we're hardly back after next year.
We're having technical difficulties here?
We can't get to that chart, but that's, I mean, that was a very telling chart regarding Mary's issue as to deficits and the fact that we're still below the '07-'08 minus, just not a map.
Oh, we gotta run that?
Okay, yeah. We got it. I think we've got it. Sorry.
Kennedy was the diocese, wasn't it? Steve wants you just to do a search on Alden.
Do a search on Brian? One of the things that I'd like to point out. Okay, this is very relevant to earlier discussions. This is where we were in '07-'08. This is where we've been, okay? This is the proposed funding level for 13-14. So if you look at this line, this is where we would be if we were at 2007-2008 funding level all along. This is where we should be had we been receiving COLAs, assignments where the assignments completed, where the assignments turned in. As parents, we all know that one. Aries Analytics, which we already have, and there's a new skin for it called EDS that will help us analyze how the kids are doing. School websites, and I added social media here because we left it, this is one of those, remember I said plans are living documents? Well, we left social media out of the plan. And it's something that we probably need to put in because many of our schools are already on Facebook and Twitter and sharing, you know, different events and student events and different events at the schools through these platforms. And we need to be able to support our schools in that. The increased use of Google Apps for Education, which you can see, we're all learning how to use, as you can see through this presentation. And then finally, and this is just kind of an FYI, in the 13-14 school year, every single child in Pedlema City Schools will have a Gmail account through Google Apps for Education. Now, K2, the accounts will, the kids won't, the accounts will be there, but they won't have access to them. In grades three through eight, the kids will have limited access, which means they'll be able to email within a domain, only within the domain of Pedlema City Schools. That's it. They won't be able to get out. In grades nine through 12, where once you're 13, internet access, you're allowed onto the internet, you will have full access. Parents, of course, will have to sign off on all of that and grant permission for the kids to be using the Google Gmail accounts. But it will enable us to really start a more collaborative atmosphere where kids can share docs and work together, work together on presentation, work together on writing pieces and that kind of thing that we can do, but it's a little clumsy right now. So the Gmail accounts are really going to afford people more access in a more streamlined and efficient manner. That's a very quick overview of the tech plan. Any questions? Mike?
What's, I don't want to do the phases, but what's the overall anticipated cost?
Of the tech plan?
Implementation, because I know we've got hardware, we've got training, we've got software.
Right, good question. So it will get phased in over the course of the next five years. And it will use the money that becomes available through, there is no, there are no money associated with this tech plan except for the E-Rates. There are no money associated with this tech plan except for the E rates, okay? So there's not like, we write this tech plan, we get a million dollars.
No, I get it. It's district funded.
So it's all district funded. So it will be between the parcel tax and the monies that we use on the parcel tax. The training will come from Title II.
No, no, I get what you're saying. Do you have an idea of a ballpark figure?
It'll cost...
A million? Two million?
Probably about two million.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
Other questions? Okay, thank you.
Public can't answer questions, I guess? We can't ask questions?
Those of you who raised your hands if you have questions, I think you can come in with those on the agenda portion because it's an agenda item. You'll hear me announce that a lot of people. Okay, a quick approval of the minutes of May eighth, twenty thirteen. Do you have a motion? Call of favor? Comment from the public. I have four parts here, I believe, and they all say the same thing, remove Wi-Fi in schools. So again, I'm going to take that that goes to the agenda item and speak at the agenda item.
No, that's a public comment. That's not an agenda item.
It's on the agenda.
No, wait a minute, hold on. No, exactly, no. That actually is separate. There is an agendized item to talk about the technology plan as a whole and we have a chance to comment on that. This is separate from that. This is not a comment on the technology plan. This is a participation in public comment and we want to have a twenty minutes of public comment to make a point that is separate from the technology plan.
That's fine. If it's separate, so we're not going to address the agenda.
We're not going to address the technology plan at all in this public comment.
Well, then before we go, because we have four speakers, I'm going to take a brief recess. So anybody who wants to leave can leave. Everybody else welcome to stay. You had a... I'm going to take a brief recess. It's time to go. It's time to move. We have to move on with the business at hand. So we've got comments from the public. I've got a little information in this paper I need to read. Under Government Code Section fifty-four, nine, fifty-four, point three A, members of the public have the right to address the governing board on any items of interest providing it relates to the quote, "subject matter jurisdiction," close quote, of the school district. In accordance with Board Policy BP nine three two three, each speaker is allocated a total of five minutes to address the board for a maximum of twenty minutes on each subject matter. While the above referenced government code allows speakers to criticize the district's policies, procedures, programs, services, and/or employees, the district does have a current policy BP AR one three one two, specific to quote, "complaints against employees," close quote. Should comments from the public pertain to a specified district employee, the board requests that the complaint first be submitted in writing to the employee's immediate supervisor for investigation. The board does not take action or discuss items not appearing on the agenda. The board values public comments and wishes to convey that although board members cannot discuss items that are not on the agenda, they do listen carefully and appreciate the value input from the public. Okay? So we have four speakers commenting from the public. It appears to be all on the same topic. So I would like now to call Noah Intara Zim. Do I have that right?
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Zim, if you could come up to the podium. I've said your name, but if you want to...
A number of parents in...
Oh, I'm sorry. Apologize for that interruption. And state your address for the record if you will.
Yeah, my name is Noah Intara Zim. I live at two eighty-six Edinburgh Lane here in Pottawattam on the west side. And I wanted to speak to the wireless issue. I think it's a really very important issue. I want to start out by saying that the internet and technology obviously is long since here to stay. I'm a huge user of technology and I'm a huge proponent of it and I'm teaching my kids about it. And it's obviously going to be a part of all of our worlds for the rest of our lives to be on. Having said that, I've got a five-year-old and a two-year-old and I've removed... I use Wi-Fi extremely sparingly in my house and made other changes. And I'm convinced by the quality and the volume of research about the negative biological effects on our cells and our DNA and particularly, as has been stated, in children's bodies and brains, they're highly more susceptible than we are and we're susceptible. The science is not in the least controversial and to get a sense of some science and then pump together this relentless piece that if you take a look at it, you can see that the evidence is overwhelming about the science. Giving up Wi-Fi is a lot like giving up... I have kind of experienced like giving up deep fried food for about a week. It's really uncomfortable. And then after that, you get a lifetime of freedom from a radically reduced cancer risk and freedom from a lot of Frankenstein-type laundress of health effects that are being more and more revealed about wireless. I've been deeply concerned since I saw it become a ubiquitous thing and I have a common sense, if you think about it, human beings have been on the planet for tens of thousands of years and up until very, very, very recently, like a blink of an eye recently in terms of our human history, we had a certain level of electromagnetic irradiation in the planet. Now all of a sudden, in the last very, very like blink of an eye, we have massively exponential amount more. So we just think of it from a common sense perspective. You know, our bodies have evolved to deal with that, much less when we're very young little kids with developing brains. I think that, you know, the move towards, this is totally understandable, the school board wants to do it. Corporations, though if we look, are always willing to profit at the expense of human health and ecosystems. And there's no exception here. Hundreds of billions of dollars of profits will create an incredible mindstream towards doing something. All we have to do is look just in recent past of the oil industry, agro business, tobacco, mining, the processed food industry, nuclear industries. These are profit-driven. This is cap... I'm a capitalist and I'm talking about the dark side of capitalism. Profits over human health, profits over human... We know that, okay? So I think the issue of this is really about convenience. It's difficult to stop something when everybody's doing it. How can it be really bad? It's so easy to get into that kind of mojito. But if we just look at this century, we can see that human history is replete, it's full up with totally insane things that the vast majority of people agreed to do. And I won't depress everybody by round enough a list of those things. But if we just think about the wars, this war, that war, this war, that war, and any number, myriad of other things, we can find these examples. So I know that this is a really big deal for the school board. I want to say that I think that this is something that is a moral issue. And not to be on high horse and you're all really good people, I'm sure, and I know better than anybody here, but just to put it in that context, it's a moral issue about health. I don't want to see my kid have his brain development to be in a wireless condition. I don't want to see his cells and his nerves not develop properly. I don't think anyone here who has kids does and nobody here who doesn't have kids wants that to happen. There's a way to get all of this one-to-one and all the stuff in the technology plan, which is really cool and I understand why the state's doing that, and we need to do that. But let's do it in a way that doesn't damage everybody's health. That can be done practically and my understanding is that reasonably with right around the same budget as going to Wi-Fi. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
How much time did he use?
Five.
That was four five?
Yep.
Okay, great. No problem.
Okay, our second speaker, David Riley. If you could please come up and again, say your name and go ahead and give us your address.
Yeah, my name is David Riley. It's two sixty-five First Street and...
Is that two sixty-five First Street? Is that Pottawattam?
Yes.
Okay.
And I'm the senior vice president of the company called David and we work with technology companies. So just like Noah had mentioned, definitely a fan of technology and all that. I think for me, I also have a five-year-old daughter that in the school system and it's about looking to try to make it, you know, as safe as possible as opposed to like no technology, make it safe. I think one of the issues with a lot of the studies that gone so far is that you kind of have a bias of certainly the industry, you know, people doing the, you know, sort of the research where it tends to show no effect. And a lot of times with, just like going back to cigarette industry, no effect was shown a lot of times because the studies were maybe cut off after three, four, five years. And in general, and most studies that are dealing with, you know, health, it's really more of a ten to twelve-year, you know, situation that you really have to look for. And I think that's where, you know, we need to sort of look at and work on studies that, you know, can involve, you know, that much time. And again, some of this technology hasn't been around that long. So you look at, just as an example, my daughter in the, you know, was at preschool at the Springville Montessori. Couple of years ago, they decided not to do Wi-Fi and go with, you know, wire because they didn't know at that point whether it was good, bad, or different, but they just decided they didn't want to, you know, take that chance with their kids. So essentially, you know, for myself, it's like I'm more for, let's, you know, give it the time to see whether testing and as Noah mentioned with Paul, if there are options to hard wire as opposed to wireless, then that would be the route that I would certainly recommend going.
And we're going to hear a little bit of a video that supports his points.
Wait, wait, wait. Just, you know...
Do you use a slide finish?
Just, oh, you're not the speaker.
I'm sorry, sweetie.
If he wants to default to something, I mean, it's just the protocol, okay?
Okay.
So would you like to show us two or three minutes of some sort of video that you put together?
Yes.
Okay? Then you're on.
A number of parents and community members have expressed concern about the potential harmful effects from the Wi-Fi or wireless internet at the Callis School. If you weren't aware of it, Wi-Fi emits the same kind of microwave radiation as cell phones. The difference is that with a cellphone, the radiation exposure is limited to the time that the phone is in use, whereas with Wi-Fi, the radiation is continuously emitted. Many have considered cell phones as potentially harmful as we've been hearing reports in the news of possible increased cancer risks. But Wi-Fi, how much radiation is even put off? Well, in this video, we're going to actually take a look and measure how much there is at the Callis School and how much the children would be exposed to every day. A growing body of scientific research indicates that the radiation emitted from cell phones and other wireless devices creates adverse biological effects. There are literally thousands of studies that show such effects as permanent DNA damage, increased risk of cancer, damage to the reproductive system, heart and circulatory issues, weakening up the blood-brain barrier, changes to melatonin levels, thyroid disruption, neurological and behavioral problems, decreased cognitive function, which could impair learning, and many other neurodegenerative diseases. You might be thinking at this point that this is sounding alarmist and that there's no way that there really are hundreds or thousands of published studies that show harmful effects. Because if there were, then this technology wouldn't even be out there. Well, if you look back at the history, when this technology first came out, it was actually never even safety tested. The FCC gave the telecommunications industry a variance and exempted cellular phones from regulatory testing altogether. This was because the equipment was considered low-power and the scientific understanding at the time was that it didn't have enough power to cause the heating of tissue necessary to cause damage. Since then, many studies have demonstrated harmful effects at power levels well below those which would create heating. But so far, this understanding has not influenced the safety standards in the United States or Canada. These standards were created by the FCC. The FCC is a regulatory agency charged with regulating airwaves, but they are not a public health agency. It never happened. The FDA admits that they don't evaluate the safety of wireless radiation emitting devices. The EPA has no program in place to address the safety of wireless communications.
All right, next speaker would be Suzy McGavin. If you could come up, he doesn't have your address on here. If you could state your name and address, Paul, please.
I said, Suzy McGavin, four seventy-eight Amberway and Pottawattam on the west side. So did I just get something here? Here's my little one. This is the one I'm concerned about, as well as concerned about the health and welfare of your school personnel. I mean, it's not just about the children. Everyone who's on your school campuses are going to be affected by wireless, you know, the radiation that's emitted by some of these Wi-Fi devices. And there's so much research and so much scientific evidence out there that I certainly hope that, yeah, as I kind of stated another time, that you can be the change makers. You can think proactively. You can think ahead. You can be, you know, on top of this precautionary principle and think in advance and just slow down a little bit and put some safety measures in place. We go on campuses where, you know, there are signs posted, "not free" or "microwave in use" or, you know, we have to sign consents to send our child on a field trip, but there's nothing that gives us parents, it puts us in a position of saying, you know, "I don't give consent. I don't give consent to put my child in a unhealthy situation." And I'm hoping that you're going to take a little bit deeper look at the safety and the health issues around your technology plan that will help do that, that will teach our educators and our children how to put these devices in safe modes. So I would like to defer some time, some more time to this video presentation.
In order to give these school readings some context, let's first take some background measurements in our local environment. In this first clip, you can see that we're outside the Maple Corner Community Center and the meter is showing twelve point seven. In the second clip, you can see that we're at Curtis Pond and the meter is showing fourteen point zero. Here we are at the East Callis Post Office and the meter is showing eleven point one. So what do these numbers mean? As a point of reference, here is a measurement taken out in the forest away from all but the most distant sources of radiation. The meter shows eleven point one. When you compare the readings from this remote natural setting to the other readings that we took in town, you can see that there really isn't that much in terms of background radiation in our local environment. Now that we've done the background environmental testing, let's go over to the school. The Callis School's Wi-Fi system is set up with five routers placed at various locations in the building. There is Wi-Fi access throughout the school with emphasis in certain areas such as the library, the community learning classroom, and the upper grades. All children in the school currently use Wi-Fi-enabled laptops. Children in the lower grades share a set that is wheeled around on a cart and children in the upper grades have their own for full-time use. Thanks to the help of the Director of Technology Services, we were able to set up one of the upper grade classrooms for our test. So here we are at the fifth and sixth grade classroom. The meter's showing five hundred. We're approaching the router, which is where it's going to be the highest, and as the number goes over nine hundred ninety-nine, it's going to show a new digit there. It looked good. Six point something. That means six thousand right next to the router. Out in the middle of the room, it's around seven or eight hundred. And as we approach the laptops, they themselves have a wireless transmitter in them because they need to be able to communicate with the router across the room. So it becomes a stronger signal right next to the transmitter, which is in the back of the screen. Here you can see, close to the front of the laptop, where your lap would be or where the student would be sitting, the numbers are several thousand, two to three thousand. So here we have the classroom test results. In the center of the room, it was eight hundred millivolts per meter. In the direct vicinity of the laptops, it was around a thousand millivolts per meter. And in front of the laptop, it was two thousand eight hundred fifty-seven millivolts per meter. Of course, I knew that the numbers were going to be high, but I had no idea that they were going to be that high. To give you an idea of how high these are, I went and I took test readings at a cellphone tower in the area. And the readings show pretty much the same as what's in the classroom, but nowhere near what the children would be exposed to. what the children would be exposed to if they were leaning over their Wi-Fi-enabled laptops. These laptops and the Wi-Fi network produce three times the microwave radiation of a cellphone tower. Most of us would never imagine that this would be the case because it doesn't make sense. It was never explained to us before, and we'd never even know about it if it weren't for a meter. Would you, as a parent, even for a second, consider a cellphone tower on the school grounds? How about one in the classroom? Well, without even knowing it, you can set into placing one in your child's lap. What does this mean?
Okay, so our final speaker on public comment would be Paul McGavin. And you can go ahead and state your name and address.
Great. My name's Paul McGavin in the 478 Amber Way in Petaluma, California. And I've got, received advanced training on this whole topic from the International Institute of Biology. And so I've got a certificate on how to use these meters and where to make proper measurements. And the measurements you saw there were in unicold volts per meter. And what a lot of measurements that are in this thing talk about microwatts per meter squared. It's just another way to talk about energy. And what I did in Steve Bowman's office was that we measured the video downloading to a laptop and also then to a tablet, and we measured 16,000 microwatts per meter squared, about 12 to 18 inches from the device. And I repeated those measurements for an iPad and for a Google Nexus tablet and for a Chromebook. And then I went and made the same measurements when you just make one simple change. And you take this lovely Chromebook, and Google wrote the driver to allow you to connect it to the internet via a wire, and the readings are zero. They are completely safe. This is safe for our children. Wireless, unfortunately, is not. So this is our choice. We go for the absolute safe choice, or we go for the, well, maybe we don't quite know, but geez, things are happening to themselves, and we have no real studies on it. Should we roll the dice with our kids' health? That's our question. Should we do that? I say no. We should be safe with our children. $249 beats the pants off of an iPad. The iPad gives you no wireless, wired networking option. They don't give you the choice. The Google Nexus tablets do, Microsoft Surface tablets do, and Chromebooks do. Those are the things that our school should be buying to make it safe for our students. I would like to yield the rest of my time to the video.
Take three minutes.
...in terms of a health issue? I don't even think we know at this point because this is such a new technology. This is the first generation of humans ever to experience direct and constant microwave radiation. What could the long-term health effects be if this does turn out to be harmful? Well, a recent study of cellphones found that long-term users, meaning those who had used one for over 10 years, were found to have a much higher cancer rate. What really stood out were the results for those who had started while young. For these individuals, the increased risk was over 500%.
That's quoting Leonard Hardell, and that was a study that was done in Sweden, and they followed him for 10 years. A 500% increase in brain cancer for people that were exposed for 1,640 hours over the course of 10 years. Our children are exposed for 1,200 hours per year. My daughter, starting in kindergarten, will be exposed to over 15,000 hours of microwave radiation by the time she graduates. We already know 1,600 hours will increase brain cancer by 500%. Do we want to do this to our children? I would think no.
Children absorb more radiation than adults. Their bodies have a higher water content, and this makes them more conductive to the radiation. They are also more vulnerable because their skulls are thinner, their brains are still growing, their immune systems are still developing, and their cells are still rapidly dividing. When you think about how much radiation exposure this generation would get by being near these wireless devices all day long, it's really staggering. The cumulative results would greatly exceed anything that's been studied so far. This amounts to a giant experiment that we are taking with something so precious as our children.
So what do we do now? If you live 1,000 feet from a cellphone tower, you get microwave radiation of roughly 12,000 microwatts per centimeter squared. There are statistically significant cancer clusters after seven to 10 years when you live 1,000 feet from a cellphone tower at 12,000 microwatts per centimeter squared. We are choosing to put 16,000 to 20,000 microwatts per centimeter squared in front of our children all day long. Do you think we'll have a different result in seven to 10 years? Do you wanna take the chance? I don't.
Why would he even consider risking their health for something so frivolous and unnecessary? Fortunately, there's a fairly easy solution, which is to hardwire the computers. Hardwiring is safe in that it emits no microwave radiation. The connection speed is much faster. It's more reliable.
I'm sorry. Get it off. There we go. Thank you. Okay. Thank you, all of you. You can vote. So without further ado, we'll move on to report on activities and correspondence of school board members. I think it's safe to say that we all did the same thing, which isn't normally the case, but we all attended the various graduations and promotions, and it was, I thought, for the most part, very well-attended. The students are getting a lot of support from the parents, the teachers, the administrators. And so we had, I think, three eighth-grade promotions and four, well, three high-school graduations, including alternative classes and graduates, and then we had adult. So, did anybody else have anything else?
Four eighth-grade promotions.
Wait, we... Oh, that's right. Okay, yeah. Okay. Tell me. So that was a lot of them, or it seemed...
It was fun.
Yeah, it seemed exciting, as it always does, because the kids are moving on and the parents are excited, and it's all about fun. So, that being said, next we'll go to the agenda. So, approval of consent agenda by consolidated motion. Go ahead and say that. All in favor? Okay, so consent agenda is approved. That brings us down to administration, human resources. Item number one, the whole employment report. Recommended motion is that the report be approved.
So moved.
Discussion. Line my...
I'm really pleased to not introduce you, because you already know this person, Renee Semick, but really to the community and to whoever's here. She's the going-to-be new principal of Petaluma Junior High School and the Sixth Grade Academy. Why don't you step up? Renee comes to us from Santa Monica. Actually, came today. Where she was the principal of, one of principals of a rather large high school that's divided into smaller, new houses. Prior to that, she was a district teacher. And prior to that, spent five years in combination of Cleveland, Ohio, Saipan, Commonwealth, Northern Mariana Islands, and Nashville, Tennessee. So she's bringing all that world experience to Petaluma Junior High. And I know, everything I've heard from the staff at Petaluma Junior High is very excited. They have met Renee. She spent a few days on the campus. And so, Renee Semick, you're Petaluma junior high principal.
Thank you. I just wanted, first, really quick, to thank the board, the superintendent, and the senior cabinet for the opportunity. Yeah, flew in this afternoon, delayed flights, was sliding into home, I felt like, when I got here. But I am really looking forward to coming up currently, so at the end of this month. Keeping up, getting started, and had a wonderful visit at PGHS. Spent the whole day and got to meet staff and students on Monday. So it's just been fantastic thus far. So I'm really excited and I'm really interested in everything that's going on, what you're talking about. So I'm ready to jump in and be in an interesting time, and that's easy for me to do, too. So thank you so much for the opportunity. I really appreciate it, and I'm really excited to be here.
Thank you.
Thank you. All in favor?
Bye.
Bye. Next item, six.
No, eight-five.
I'm sorry. Eight-five is passed. So, I'm sorry, five. So we need a motion.
Second.
So discussion.
What's the item?
It's eight-five. It's a number of board bylaws. The recommended motion is that the board approve the second reading of following the number of board bylaws.
You changed the bylaws?
Regarding meeting conduct.
Right. Can we have comments?
Yes.
If you'd like to address it, who's talking about this?
I am talking about this. So tonight, we do have a modification to the proposed bylaws that we're going back to the first reading on this, although it will not be in action out of the... On page three, under number five, working with council, she had recommendation in modification of language to be more clear. And so you'll see in italics and in bold, I'm starting with the board shall limit the total time. So that's the proposed change. So this will be first reading because of the modification to the...
Can we make clear to everybody what it says?
Sorry, there was a copy, but I...
You want to read it?
I'll read. The board shall limit the total time for public input on each subject to 20 minutes. In consideration for time involved and purpose of the public, purpose of the Brown Act, public comment shall be limited to direct communication by the members of the public wishing to address the board and shall not include the showing or airing of tapes or electronic recording. So that's the proposal. And the desire or the purpose for public comment is to allow the community to state their opinions and provide input and to allow as many people who want to to provide input. And we do limit that under this to 20 minutes. So if you have a lot of wanting to provide input, the amount of time will be decreased per person presenting as well.
Okay. Any discussion?
Yes.
No. Between us, and then we'll get to have a comment.
Okay, great.
Thanks.
Okay. I like the idea of having the opportunity for more people to speak. And because it's not an agenda item, and not a presentation, I feel that it's appropriate to have individuals, you know, share their thoughts and feelings, but I haven't been that.
Okay. Any other comments or discussion?
Yes, many. Let's make sure we're very clear about what we're saying. We had 20 minutes before, and we have 20 minutes now. That's not the change here. 20 minutes was allowed before, 20 minutes is allowed now. The change here is that they're proposing to say, "Public comment people will no longer have the same rights as people who are put on the agenda." Public comment people will be put at a disadvantage versus the things that they choose to put on the agenda. That is prejudicial and unfair. That is not correct. There is no time saved whether we use audiovisual materials or not. It's the same amount of time. This is a little bit of a disingenuous effort on the school board's part to try to rein in people like myself that are actually trying to get some good information across, because I've been trying for a long time. I've been educating the district and the school board since February 21st, and I've gotten a stiff arm pretty much from February 21st to today. And there's much more information to be shared about what are safe choices for our children. But they're gonna keep me from being able to show the wonderful videos that are on YouTube and the presentations that people all over the world put together. We won't have the opportunity to see those kinds of presentations if they pass this. And then there's the First Amendment right. We have five minutes to actually speak and communicate in any way we choose. You can't dictate my words. You can't dictate how I choose to share them. You may say this publicly-funded and purchased projector might not be available for my use, but you cannot enforce me to not use my own equipment to do the thing. So even though you may get me off of that projector and onto this projector, this one shows up on video just as well as that shows up on video, I don't believe you can actually prevent me from using my own equipment during public comment. So this all ends up being kind of an act of silliness. There's no reason why anyone in public comment should be disadvantaged versus people who speak on the agenda, as long as we don't take any more time. I would like as many people to speak as possible. I would like them to speak as effectively as possible. And your presentations on digital media, as told by Troy Sanderson on the meeting, three meetings ago, which is on by virtual video, it's on the internet, you can find it. He says something to the effect, "Gee, has anyone noticed how everyone is using this PowerPoint and this internet thing to get their point across? That's really telling. That's a 21st-century skill." And here, they're gonna do this back to the 18th century, when we just have to wave paper and try to paint a picture of something that's very difficult, when an animation that we want our students to use are not gonna be able to use by the members of the public to get important information across to the school board, who is responsible for making decisions, is accountable for making those decisions. So for them to put a barrier in place on communication of information to them is wrong, it is prejudicial, it is against the Constitution, the First Amendment, freedom of speech, and it just should not stand. It should not happen at all. Mostly, I've got four main reasons in my email, two-page email, Steve Bowman. I'm gonna put it on my website. Everyone can publicly read it. But essentially, there's four reasons why this should not be put on the voting board. It violates the First Amendment. It does not reflect our modern times and the standards that have already been established in these meetings for many, many presentations given to this body using that equipment, which has been documented on Petaluma Community Access. We've got lots of evidence for it. Why you should make this change now? I have no idea. It's in no one's best interest. It creates inequity among those wishing to present information to the school board. Those to which the school board grants a spot on the agenda are given an advantage. Those that are not given that position are at a disadvantage, and they're prohibited from using it. The last point is, it is unenforceable. You cannot prevent me from using this. The effect will not be true. You will not keep people from using modern technology. You will not keep them from communicating good information to you. It will not protect you from the truth. I suggest that you strike it and don't vote on it. Keep it as a status quo. Allow everybody access to this as we have forever, and just live and evaluate the real information, and don't even play games like this. That's my suggestion.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, Colin.
You have a comment?
With all due respect, and I know that you know how to reach me, Mr. McGavin, because we run in some same circles, don't we? You've never phoned me or emailed me and asked to meet with you. You're acting like this is the only place you can give me information. I can tell you there's a handful of people that are here tonight that have met with me to discuss issues regarding the school board, to inform me, educate, give me their opinion.
Would you like to meet?
This is not the only place.
Would you like to meet?
Well, you fill me in about every single meeting, but sure.
I'd love to meet with you. I'd love to meet with you, and you, and you. I meet you all the time, many times.
Because I feel like you're acting like we're disingenuous, or you're stating we're disingenuous up here.
This is disingenuous, yes.
But you're saying that we're not providing you an opportunity to talk to us. The opportunity's been there for a long time.
Well, let me say...
Long as I've been on the school board, you've been able to call me, your email.
Well, let me respond to that, please.
Okay.
Okay? I did email the board. I emailed the board sometime in March, and I gave them a whole bunch of information, and I got zero responses. I emailed every one of you in March.
We cannot respond to something that you've emailed all of us because it's in a Brown Act violation. We've created a serial conversation. But you can meet me for coffee when they're not present, and I can talk back and forth, give you my opinion, share information, watch your YouTube video. I can go to the movies with you, Mr. McGavin. But we can't do that together on an issue that might come before us.
Well, this is a very efficient way to do it, and this is not a bad way to do it. And we're taking advantage of our public comment hearing in order to do it.
And the disingenuous part, I mean, that didn't need to be said, because it's also disingenuous to suggest that you can't cite people, like a number of our speakers have, to YouTube, I think you referenced YouTube, or wherever you want. I mean, it's on public, it's publicly broadcast here. You can cite people to your YouTube or whatever YouTube...
I don't have that in any service.
Cite. Go to YouTube, you know...
Oh, instead of actually showing it?
Yes.
Oh, that's a suspect? Don't go there and maybe see it as opposed to actually watch it now?
Well, you're not, are you thinking a 20-minute public hearing comment? You're gonna run an hour video?
No, I don't want a 20-minute video. Or a 15-minute video.
Maybe.
Yeah.
Five-minute video, if you think about it.
Well, not four people, and I did it tonight. I actually had 12 minutes scheduled. I actually planned five minutes.
That's because we're giving you a latitude to do that. We don't have to allow that. We can simply say... Five-minute video, if you think about it.
Well, not four people, and I did it tonight. I actually had twelve minutes scheduled, I actually planned five minutes.
That's because we're giving you the latitude to do that. We don't have to allow that. We can simply say, you come up and show your video, that other speakers could show their video. I mean, you'll burn your five minutes if I was, if I was that Machiavellian, or like you say, disingenuous. I thought we did it very fairly for you, and we let it go. The point is, it's disingenuous to suggest that there aren't ways to effectively communicate. Okay, this is something that we're just taking information on, that's why it's open for discussion, okay?
Right.
But it doesn't need to say how there's, you know, something disingenuous going on.
The disingenuous part is he was trying to make the statement that now we're making a change to twenty minutes. That's not true, twenty minutes have never changed.
Okay, well, I would like to make a comment, though, when you referred that we've always done it this way with having this available. No, exceptions have been made. This was not normal. Exceptions were made for you so that you could present in, in times past. This is not a normal...
We have precedents.
Right.
And we have freedom. So, we can use both precedents and freedom.
And your point regarding video presentations, well taken, I'm listening, we hear it.
Good.
So...
Okay, let's just help the barriers in place, that's all I'm saying. Get your permission, love. And I would love to meet with anyone who would like to meet an individual. Open invitation, uh, I'd love, I'll take your emails afterwards, and I'll invite you in person.
Since we've modified this item, my recommendation is that we not take action tonight, have it as first reading, and bring it back to the next meeting. For our board decision, does that require an action?
Okay, then let's go with that. Okay, so we're not taking a vote on...
Five.
Five? So, we'll move on to number six. The, uh, Resolution twelve thirteen thirty, recommended motion is a Resolution twelve thirteen thirty of the Board of Education, the Pedaluma City Elementary School District, and the Pedaluma Joint Union High School District, um, eliminating one three-hour-per-day bilingual instructional system position made effective August thirteenth, twenty thirteen, be adopted.
So, second.
You want to address that, Ron?
Yes. Excuse me. Um, at a meeting at Cherry Island, there was a decision that the funding really wasn't being appropriately used for bilingual instructional system at that school. Fortunate thing for this particular employee, we actually had a bilingual instructional assistant take another job at the district, so there will be some openings throughout the district, um, a little bit of... And so, this person, um, should remain employed, but to go through this process, because we are closing down this position.
Okay. All in favor? Next item, number seven. Uh, the proposed annex to the collective bargaining agreement. Recommended motion is a proposed tentative agreement to the collective bargaining room between the Pedaluma City Elementary and Pedaluma Joint Union High School Districts, and the Pedaluma Federation of Teachers be approved.
Second.
Discussion?
Yeah, just to share the fact that, um, the district did reach a tentative agreement with the Pedaluma Federation of Teachers, and we're asking for the board to ratify that agreement this evening.
I have a question. I'm, I'm just kind of curious as to how could the agreement have been reached when big segments, you know? I, I'm confused as to, there was a tentative agreement, and then I understand of the voting process, but, um, it, it rather surprises me that the negotiating team for vote, you know, for, for teachers, agreed to something which doesn't sound like they agree to anymore. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I think that is, that is a good question. I mean, we spent, um, a number of meetings and hours, um, working back and forth to come up with a tentative agreement that we were successful in doing, and, um, we've heard from the membership relative to the tentative agreement that at this point, um, the request is that the board honor the tentative agreement and approve this evening. With it not being ratified by the teachers, it will not go into effect until such time that we have an agreement that's ratified.
And then, what we, what has been negotiated at that level could change on either side?
Um, correct, I mean, if the tentative agreement, the tentative agreement will not go into effect, so...
It's just saying we authorize what we...
At the conclusion of this meeting, um, there's closed session with the board to talk about, um, negotiations and the process moving forward.
I had a concern in reading the agreement, in particular for those, um, teachers who have, um, signed up to retire with the retirement benefit. Um, I want to make sure that those teachers have that benefit if the agreement is, hasn't been ratified, because, you know, they were...
Is that a best of by, or...
Yes, it is. Um, the district did reach a memorandum of understanding relative to the early retirement sense so that we could allow in a timely manner, um, teachers to retire effective at the end of this, um, school year.
Okay.
So, that, that agreement does stay in effect, um, even though there's a component that's tied to the tentative agreement. It's in effect, you know, the memorandum of understanding separate for that distinct item.
Is that the open item?
That is the open, uh, memorandum of understanding.
Okay.
Okay.
Outside of the tentative agreement.
Okay, all in favor? Thank you. That brings us to item number eight. So, the proposed collective bargaining agreement, the recommended motion is that the twenty thirteen, twenty sixteen proposed natural contract between Pedaluma City Elementary and Pedaluma Joint Union High School Districts and the California School Employees Association, chapter number two twelve, be approved.
Uh, second.
Discussion?
Yeah, we reached a tentative agreement with the California School Employees Association that represents our classified employees in the district. It's very much in line with the tentative agreement that was reached with the Federation of Teachers relative to workdays and benefits. As the major components of that agreement, there are, were other items that were open to that agreement. Um, I don't know if Loretta wants to speak to the tentative agreement or not, but, um, again, it was a negotiated agreement.
I'll, I'll say a couple, I'll say a couple of things. I thought it was a really good agreement, that there was a lot of time. As Steve said, we put in time, we surveyed our members, we, you know, went to the table, went back and forth, and we felt it was a good agreement, we took it to the members, and they ratified it.
Thank you.
I have a question regarding, um, an agreement with the one bargaining unit and the non-ratified agreement with another. If, if there's some issue that gets changed and we approve this agreement, you know, can it be adjusted later to reflect any, you know...
Uh, we do have, um, which is unusual, because they usually don't agree to a Me Too language, but there's a Me Too language in the CSZA agreement, um, as part of having reached an agreement with the teachers first. We agreed that if something were to change CSZA, um, is, would become... Loretta and the Me Too, and was it back to the table, or...
It was if any other unit were to receive something higher than our days back or the, um, increase in the healthcare cap, any of the units, teachers confidential, PLA, any of them, the, the district would offer us a life.
Just on those items?
Just on those items.
It doesn't reopen it, everything?
Correct.
Is that the same on the downside too, or no?
No.
All in favor? Uh, number nine would be the naming of facility. The recommended motion is that the board consider approval of proposed naming of Pedaluma High School's tennis courts as the Sarah Wadsworth Memorial Courts after receiving input from the community during the public hearing.
So...
Any discussion?
I would like to make a comment.
So, there was a committee of, um, Pedaluma High School, um, teachers and community members who got together and made the recommendation to have the board consider this. They're planning on, I believe, the first day of school, which is also Sarah Wadsworth's birthday, to have, um, a ceremony at the tennis courts to, um, to honor Sarah and to name the course in her honor.
I'd like to, to just say that having attended multiple, um, award ceremonies and heard from students of the dam, uh, how the impact that's had on their lives, I, I feel that this is a very appropriate, um, addition to the tennis program. So, I'm, I'm pleased that the group has decided to offer.
She was definitely a reflective, dedicated, educated, and, um, I like that, a great tennis court. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
So, we have, uh, anybody want to comment any of the discussion items?
Other, just first readings.
So, we'll go down to business services. Item seven of business services. Disclosure of collective bargaining agreement. The recommended motion is that the board approve the proposed disclosure of collective bargaining between Pedaluma City Elementary and Pedaluma Joint Union High School Districts and the Federation of Teachers, local, including by CFT slash AFT.
So, second.
The, um, cost, I just wanted to share the cost of the agreement, of the proposed settlement, for the increase in the cap for health and welfare benefits for, this is for the teachers only, and adding back the five student days and three staff development days. The total cost for that would be one million, four hundred and forty-one dollars and nine, nine hundred and twenty-six dollars.
Any other comments or discussion? All in favor? Item eight, disclosure of collective bargaining agreement. Recommended motion is that the board approve the proposed disclosure of collective bargaining agreement between the Pedaluma City Elementary and Pedaluma Joint Union High School Districts and the California School Employees Association, Pedaluma, chapter two twelve.
So, second.
Discussion?
Um, just in sharing in a similar fashion, um, the bargaining unit, um, proposed agreement for the increased cap in health and welfare benefits and, and reinstatement of furlough days will have a total cost of five hundred and fifty-nine thousand, seven hundred and ninety-four dollars for that bargaining agreement.
All in favor? Item nine, disclosure of meet confer agreement. Recommended motion is that the board approve the proposed disclosure of meet confer agreement between the Pedaluma City Elementary and Pedaluma Joint Union High School Districts and the Pedaluma Confidential Employees. Discussion?
Well, actually, I, I have combined the information with regard to the, both meet and confer groups, um, so I could share that with you for both nine and ten. Um, that complete cost, again, keeping, all the employees are basically, uh, being treated same, same cap on health and welfare benefits, and in addition, reinstating furlough days that we've all experienced. And the cost for that group is two hundred and seven thousand, seven hundred and seventy dollars.
Okay, now nine only, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
Aye. Ten, any other motion?
So, second.
Actually, I probably should draw it, huh? Just read it for the record. Disclosure of meet confer agreement. The recommended motion is that the board approve the proposed disclosure of meet confer agreement between the Pedaluma City Elementary and Pedaluma Joint Union High School Districts and the Pedaluma Leadership Association. Now, do I have a motion?
So, second.
So, I take it that was the only discussion, nothing to add?
Nothing, no, nothing to add.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next item, eleven. Resolution twelve thirteen dash thirty-one. The recommended motion is that the Resolution twelve thirteen thirty-one of the Board of Education, the Pedaluma City Elementary and Pedaluma Joint Union High School Districts, of the county, its own, and the state, to authorize designated personnel to sign contracts and agreement documents for fiscal year twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen, be adopted.
So, second.
Discussion?
Um, as designated, if you approve this, there will be three, um, people, actually, in this room who would be authorized to sign contracts and agreements. Superintendent Steve Bowman, Assistant Superintendent Jane Escobedo, and myself, Chief Business Executive. Each option.
All in favor? Twelve's information only, consent, so now we're at, um, educational services, item three. District Technology and Wi-Fi Plan Approval. That the board review and approve, the Pedaluma City Schools District Technology Plan, twenty thirteen to twenty eighteen.
So, second.
Uh, any discussion?
I like that Jane says that it's a, it's a working...
A living constitution, but a living, a working plan.
Yep.
Okay.
And that it can modify and change as we go along.
And I'd like to clarify one thing. I said it would cost about two million, which it will cost about two million. That is without the installation of the infrastructure. That, that doesn't include infrastructure money, so, and that is to be estimated. We're working on those estimates on this plan.
The infrastructure is something that the E-rate might help you with.
Right, right, and so we've got to consult, working with the E-rate to see if we can, um, to get an estimate going about how much it will cost.
And what, what percentage do you feel like the E-rate's going to pay of the overall?
Not a high percentage. We only qualify for E-rate at two of our schools, that would be McKinley and McDowell.
Okay.
Okay.
Two more other items, right?
Right.
Do you have any comments?
No.
Anybody want to out there discuss this agenda item?
Yes, I do.
You do?
I do, yes, very, very much so, thank you. Okay, so my understanding from everyone's discussion today is that this is not a limited time. This is not a five-minute and you're done, this is until we're finished. Everything here? So, the good news is that we can't make changes to it, right? So, as we learn new things, we can actually make some better choices. And so, that's great, because we are learning new things. And we're learning about the fact that the margins, they most truly can affect children in some significant ways. And so, what I've done over the past week, week and a half, is I've been able to get public records from the district, and I've looked through pretty much all the invoices that were for technology over the last five years. And I can just tell you right up front that you can save a whole lot of money. You've found money right there, okay?
I'm all for that.
Yeah, and I can point it out to you exactly where you can save, because, you know, two main places you spend money you don't need to spend is on Microsoft Office, because there are many open source and free choices which are almost identical to Microsoft Office, which are absolutely free. You can save all of that money, because by the time these kids graduate, it's all going to change anyway. So, there's really no reason today to pay a single dollar to Microsoft. Now, the other thing where you can save money, this is making it a little harder for him to do, but it's very easy to do today, is Linux. Linux has a desktop which is almost perfectly like Windows. It is so simple, it's, it's really easy to use. Like, you don't pay the tax, because you don't have to pay very much when you buy a laptop. Instead of ordering an Noble laptop with Windows, you order an Noble laptop with Linux. And you put LibreOffice on it, and bang, you have a no software cost laptop. From what I saw, that would save you probably a hundred to two hundred thousand dollars a year, just that, alone. So, you know, there are many things that I've learned by going through the whole thing. The other thing I've learned is that the number one expense you guys make is for wireless stuff. It's amazing to me. But you spend more on wireless than you do anything else. And so, this economic decision that says, gee, wireless is less expensive than wire, not true. Not true at all. It is less expensive to do it wired than wireless. And that is conclusion that I'll be able to share with you, because I've analyzed all of the invoices. So, the other thing that we're really going to see in the plan is that, yes, one-to-one device is a great idea. You know, kids like to have devices, they like to have connectivity. The important point about all of the educational plans is connectivity. We want them to be able to get on the internet, get off the internet, get the thing, interact with people, that's all the good stuff. And we can do all of it, you know, wire it, that's the good news. We don't have to say, hey, bring whatever you got out there, and we'll support it. We can say, we have certain district standards. In fact, you've already set them, they're in your technology plan. You've already picked particular brand names in your technology plan. Now, I asked Mike Cole about, well, what about this iPad standard? Why would we have a standard for an iPad if, if there are better alternatives out there? Less expensive ones, and more performant ones, and ones that are safe? And his answer to me was, well, you know, Apple's been in education for a long time, and so, you know, that's, that's our standard. And I asked myself, well, why should that be a standard? You have mostly Windows laptops, you're not buying mostly Mac laptops or hardware. Uh, it's just that the iPad was the first one out. Now, the real problem with the iPad, and I'm working with them on it, is that they don't yet have the driver to enable a little dongle, a connector, to be able to use the internet. And I believe they may solve it, and that'd be great if they did. But there's no promises now, and I haven't heard back from Tim Cook, and I'm in discussion with his office on it, okay? They just went through the big WWDC. But I do know this, I work with the top Google engineers, I'm a software developer. But I do know this, I work with the top Google engineers, I'm a software developer, okay? So I got to the inside of them, and they have given me the assurance that every Google device will be able to use these USB-to-USB connectors and connect to the outside world. So every Chromebook you buy, every Google Nexus seven tablet, which are much less expensive than the iPads you buy, every Google Nexus ten tablet, which is much less expensive than the iPad, will connect through wires.
Does Google want to shut wire system up and make us a model of school systems?
I don't know, we can talk to them.
You have my attention if you got a degree there.
Believe me, I know. I'm telling you.
I'm asking you.
I may be working there soon. So I'm just telling you that they are trying to do good things to build applications. They have Google Play for Education that's coming out, okay? And it's going to basically, in my opinion, clean up what's happening in the Apple side of the world. Why? Because they have both Chrome as an OS, and they have Android as an OS. And both of them work on the Chromebook and the tablets, and the education apps are going to be duplicated, all right? And I do these kinds of apps, I make them, and I go through paints to make for iOS and Android and Windows and all the rest, and I use a tool to allow us to do it. It's coming fast. So I got to believe that your best play is Google Apps for Education, free, you get to use all the documents and things, you don't have to use Microsoft Office anymore. If you don't like that, and you want to actually just have it in your desktop, LibreOffice is free, many, many good choices for you guys to save money, because we do want to save money, you know? I mean, that's the key thing. And one-on-one is a great idea, if you took your, the money for an iPad, five, six hundred bucks per iPad, and you shifted to a two hundred and forty-nine dollar Chromebook, we picked ours up for two sixteen, they are wonderful. They can do the internet, they do great stuff, they do all the ducks, they do it all. If that was your educational standard, and many, many schools are making that their educational standard, bang, you save a ton of money.
Do you have somebody you can cite to me? I mean, asking all services, school systems that are...
Yeah, yeah.
Just, I mean, around, say, let's just say Northern California?
I know Southern California for sure.
Okay.
I've been talking to Samsung, because I wanted to understand, did the wireless networking thing happen? The guy was saying, my God, we got twenty thousand of these going out to the whole school, unified school systems. So down in the desert, I can find all the names for you.
I'd be interested.
I'll do that, okay? I will dig them all up for each of Samsung and hand it to you, so you understand how many people are choosing that.
Yeah.
Because it's great, its smarter balance recommends it, it's got the keyboard, it's got the large enough screen, it does all your assessment testing, it works like a laptop, it's a wonderful little device. What essentially it is, it's a Google Nexus tablet with a keyboard, okay? It's the same processor, and it's got a great screen, we've taught my five-year-old daughter how to use it. She's dumb, she gets it.
You gotta be aware.
She goes to Starfall, she does everything she needs to do. And we have parental controls in the Chromebook. You don't have that in the iPad, okay? So there are really good choices out there, if you just look a little harder, instead of just going for the easy answer, all right? That definitely is a key thing, pieces of work. Now, the E-rate funding, I did take a good hard look at what was going on in McKinley and McDowell, and I understand what you're trying to do, which essentially is take advantage of ninety percent federal money to get a whole bunch of new equipment in, and then take the old equipment and use it somewhere else. You know, it seems to make some economic sense to try and get some bang for your buck by getting some federal dollars. And I think that as a strategy, not bad, but when you look at the details of the E-rate program and what you're doing there, you take the whole sum, you know, it's a big dollar amount, it's like somewhere around two hundred and ninety thousand dollars, and you said goodbye to a two hundred and ten thousand dollar bid, I don't know why, but you chose the two hundred and ninety thousand dollar one. And then I look and I say to myself, okay, well, here's a contract, and this contract has two hundred dollars an hour for guys to put wireless stuff and stuff all through your school, where are the other guys that have done it in the past? Let me look at those contracts. Oh, we don't have any of those contracts. Why? Well, we did it ourselves. Okay, so I understand, thanks. This is the only contract that we have outside vendors doing this, and they're charging us two hundred dollars an hour to do it, and we were able to do it ourselves without paying any of that in the past. And I ask myself...
So in your experience, what's the going outside rate? I get in-house, but what's the going outside rate in your experience?
On my experience, I don't do a lot of it. I'm guessing it's like sixty to seventy-five bucks at the tops. I mean, that's about it for variety of work, and mostly it's construction stuff, right? And then when you take a look at the percentage of money that actually is being spent on that project, and you say, well, we're doing a whole lot of infrastructure in order to get fiber optic to the curve and all the rest, and that's all really good stuff, okay? And so they're doing a good job of planning, and you would think, that's the expensive part. It's not. Your wireless is about forty, sixty percent or seventy percent of the cost of that project. And I ask myself, why? Why should it cost that much? It's just some wireless routers? And then I look at what the wireless routers are, and now it's starting to, the lightbulb's going on, okay? What we choose to put in our schools are not wireless routers that are appropriate for children, we choose to put wireless routers that are industrial strength routers. These are made for big office buildings, and big hospitals, and big warehouses. These things have very strong antennas, they're both two-point-four gigahertz and five gigahertz, and they put out a lot more power than your average router. And what I, if there's anything that you can learn from what we've learned about wireless technology, you know, are there safe ways to transition to wire? Are there? Yes, there are. Are there safe ways to look at a device and say, how do I use this device safely? The answer is sparingly, as little as possible. What does that mean? That means turn them all off, you start your little classroom, now it's time to do an exercise, perfect. Turn on the wireless router, turn on your iPads, do a few things, when you're done, turn them back off, put those iPads on airplane mode. If they don't get into airplane mode, they are continually irradiating yourself, your student, everybody else, all day, because they send out beacon signals whenever you're carrying them around. You put them in your pockets, you put them in your backpack, anytime you carry them, they're getting them, all day, because they're looking for the Wi-Fi network if it's not there, or they're looking for the 3G signal that's not there. And they constantly power up. The only way to protect yourselves from it is to slip it into airplane mode. Everybody should know this. I have explored the district to put this information into the district technology plan. I have been stiff-armed. The reason I was given by Jason is, well, the state doesn't require it, so we're not going to do it. No, I'm like, why? This is safety, this is, this is right out of your own previous technology plans. I am quoting page six, "Student, teachers, administrators, and staff will practice appropriate and safe use of technology." That is currently on your website, saying is a goal for your technology plan, yet you have no provisions in your technology plan about safe use of technology.
Well, I think, just in all deference, to clarify, I think sometimes when they use safe, they're talking about appropriate age groups going out onto the internet, and I think you're talking more about, what do I call it, a physical, scientific, biological safe, you see the difference?
I can understand that safety has more than what we...
Yeah, yeah, I think that's what it is.
Yeah, I can understand that.
Yeah.
But guess what?
I don't think it's ruled out.
Your, your words say it.
Yeah, no, I'm not, I'm not, I'm saying they don't. I'm just simply saying deference to the people who did that, I think they were looking at more of a, a social, appropriate...
But you know what? This was written a long time ago, we don't really know who wrote it, we don't know the reasons for why they wrote it, but thank God they did, right? Thank God they put it in there, because we have it in their house. And so we have, these are directions for you, and these are directions for Steve, and these are directions for Mike Cole, and they are, hey, we need to, "Student, teachers, administrators, and staff will practice appropriate and safe use of technology. We need to address what is safe use of technology."
That's what you're doing, give them the good information.
Keep going, don't drive it.
Don't move it.
Okay, so you do mention it on page ten again, "Personal Pursuits and Safety," again on pages twelve and thirteen, "Use of Technology in Responsible and Ethical Manner," another one on page twenty-five, "Use Computers to Safely Enhance Personal Productivity." The key thing here is connectivity counts, okay? Now, it makes absolutely no difference in your house, if you were sitting on your couch and you're getting at the internet through a wireless thing, or if you reach over and take the cable and stick it into your, your device and you're getting your internet, it's the same connectivity. It's a little less convenient, is what it is. It means that you don't have every place to go, you have a few dedicated places to go, okay? And the answer is...
That goes to your example that when you're wired up, it's zero...
It's zero.
Radiation.
Think about a hose. You have a hose, and you have electrical wires for reasons, it's to encase what's flowing. You're encasing water, you're encasing electricity. If you didn't have those, you'd be spraying water all over the room! Everything would get wet, and you'd go, ugh, I don't want to do that. Well, that's what we're doing with wireless. We are putting an antenna that is sending out strobe light signals going bang, 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 the whole time they're on. And you can hear them, I have meters here, I can share you what it sounds like when the video downloads on this, you can hear the signals. And so the whole issue here is that, why should we choose to throw it out in the room because it's not good for us? Why not keep it safely encased in something like a wire for electricity, a pipe for water, and an ethernet cable for our other signals? It just makes obvious sense if you really think through the physics of it, okay? So, what is the problem then with, you know, looking at how do we do things a little more safely, okay?
There's no problem.
If we can cut down the amount of wireless, why do we transition to a wired world? We're doing a really good thing for our kids, we really are. And then the other issue is people just think, well, why should we even do that? Why should we bother to go that way? It just seems like a big problem. You know, until they actually show me the absolute proof about something or other, I'm not going to do a thing. This is what I get a lot. And I say, well, there are many, many studies, many, eight thousand of them, from how long? Since nineteen sixties, that have shown us what this stuff does to us. We studied it for radar operators, that's how we know, that's how we set these standards. We said, what does it take for a radar operator who's sitting there getting not a continuous signal, but an intermittent signal? Comes every once in a while. And this guy gets a little jilted, well, what's been going on with our radar operators? They're going bald, they're having neurological problems, they are infertile, this is a problem. This is a problem. So they say, well, okay, so we got to figure out what's the level of math. They came out with a hundred thousand as a number, that was way too high, they lowered it to a thousand. And you hear this thing, a thousand microwatts per centimeter square, that is our current national standard, a thousand microwatts per, which is actually ten million microwatts per meter square. That's a big number. What do scientists feel is a safe number? Free. Microwatts per meter square. Our standard says ten million is free. So I, I tried to figure out, where does this come from? I got on the phone, unbelievably, I got on the phone, the Director of the National Council of Radiation Protection, the executive director, spent an hour going through them. I spent two and a half hours with a guy from the FCC to learn how to do the calculations to figure out what does the standard really mean. This is the truth, this is what they got the number. In nineteen eighty-six, where it comes from, they did a corroborative studies to basically take monkeys and rats, and they irradiated them with Wi-Fi essentially. And they kept building up with more and more and more amounts, until that animal would no longer respond to get food. They just found out what was the amount that would render that animal incapable of getting its food. Then they stuck a thermometer up his butt and took a measurement. That's our safety standard, that is it. That is where we get SARS from, that is where it all comes from. It's all the belief that the only thing that happens to people with microwave radiation is that their tissue will heat up like a microwave oven, and that is what causes health effects, nothing else is considered.
Well, Paul, I have learned that from you, I get that from you?
Yeah.
And as a board member, I'm very interested in you continuing to share your education with, how could we as a district do that, you know, a little bit, it's somewhat...
I'll go back in time.
Yeah, I want you to continue to talk about when you went through the technology plan. So if you see that we can do hard wireless cheaper than Wi-Fi, I'm all ears, if you can show, I mean, then it becomes that question, why not do it that way? I agree with you.
Exactly.
But I'm going to have to tell you, to be honest...
Yep.
At some level, I see these grassroots organizations, and I always feel the efficacy, it's fine to educate us here, but it's stink and fed, especially, like you say, the FCC, because when I turn on the spigot, I mean, I expect that water to be puddled, I expect to be able to drink it. When I buy food at any store and I put it on my table, I expect it to be safe, and I trust, at some point, I know people, it's kind of out of vogue to trust government, but I'm one of those guys that, you know, I have some faith in good people who work for the government, that the standards protect us. And I know it's not a perfect system, and we can all talk about tobacco, and we can talk about all kinds of things, and GMOs, I know there's a lot of topics, and apparently this is one as well, smart meters, those sort of things. But at some level, wouldn't it be more effective if people could get those standards changed, the FCC, the radiation levels, so the companies then have to keep their devices within that?
Great idea! They're just looking at it right now. So on March twenty-seventh, the FCC actually put open to public comment and said, hey, guys, what should we do? Should we revise our standard? Should we actually do something? Should we lower it? Should we raise it? What should we do? And they're going to public comment right now, it's open until maybe two or three more days from now, okay? And a lot of people weighed in.
Did you?
Okay. Oh, yes, oh, yes. Okay, but the problem, the problem is, and I'll tell you exactly why, it's not going to be changed, okay?
Okay, real quick, tell us that, but then I'd like you to get back to, do you know some more of the technology plan?
The FCC is run by people from the Cell for Telephone Industry Association. Those are the people who are at the top of the FCC, and when they leave, they go back out, and so those people...
Oh, now you're going to be saying that about the old companies, stop.
That is not going to change. There's too much infrastructure in place for them to lower the standard. If they lowered the standard, they would have to move cell phone towers, they would have to remove devices that are out there in full, it would have a huge economic impact. And all they're looking at in their public comment is not just what is safe, what is also safe and reasonably economic possibly to do. And you fail that task if you sit there and say, everybody has to be below the standards, okay? But what you can do as a community, and you can do as a school, is you can say, all right, how did they treat me? In nineteen ninety-six, the federal government gave the cellular industry a free ride, a variance. They said, you don't have to test your products, you can put a cell phone tower anywhere, and no one in the country can actually oppose it for health reasons. It was just a blank check, they wrote to the seller, okay? If you live, if you can see a cell phone tower from your house, okay, you're in trouble. Oh, my goodness, they're all over the place, I can go outside and put three out, okay? Okay, they're just big towers. I have pictures of my presentation if we are going to...
Paul, you're going to interrupt here, you can tell the people, you'll be happy to talk to them afterward?
I mean, I'll talk to you afterwards.
Give them your email, whatever, but, please, just go back to the technology plan, I mean, I was actually interested in some of your suggestions, your connections with Google, and some of that, you know, I mean, we are developing this document, so...
So what I'm trying to say to you is that the standards are that, in this community, at least on the west side, I have the pictures of my presentation, we may not get there because it's still going okay without them, they respect each other's schools, they are pretty far away from your schools, they're about a mile or two, and behind hills, and so I go to Cherry Valley, it's the most pristine environment I've found in Pedaluma. It is one microwave...
In all of Pedaluma or of all our schools?
In all of Pedaluma, so far. I have measured everything, but...
Well, you don't have to be my daughter candidate.
I'm at five, I'm at a pretty good place, okay? If you want to walk outside, you're going to be probably around forty, okay? And you go down town, you're going to be like a hundred and twenty. All right, and my school's preschool right now, my daughter's preschool, it's a hundred and forty in Parkin, because they put up a new cell phone tower, all right? So these are things that you can measure, I've got the meters to do it. Bottom line is, you have pretty nice, calm school environments, and the few that I've measured, which is Valley Vista and Cherry Valley, unbelievably beautiful and calm, okay? And then you choose to put the equivalent of a cell phone tower in a kindergarten room, and say, now we put the cell phone tower in the room! And what was one micro watt per meter squared is now ten to twenty thousand microwatts.
And you're referring to the router?
The router. And it's not just the router, it is the use of the wireless device.
But you can turn those off and on, we can set...
You, you could, you should turn them off every night, okay? Yeah, you'd save a lot of energy if you did, right? And then the reason they say they can't is because of the way they have configured and create problems with things, of course you turn them off, right? Everybody should turn off the wireless router when they go to bed. You don't get eight hours of this. And what this does is it cuts down your melatonin production, you need your melatonin production to fight cancer. And if you have, your brain sees this light. So, back to technology plan, okay? So, we know, the bottom line is, all I'm asking you to do is think about start removing some of those routers and putting wired in as well. I personally have asked the Cherry Valley School to allow me to do it at my cost. Comcast will drop it in, do it, no cost to them, bang, done. Can't get a response. It just seems crazy to me that you would want to radiate kindergarteners without actually trying to do something that's safe for them. Okay? So look, what, what do you really want as a technical plan? You wanna be able to use connectivity and education in a way that brings kids down the learning curve and allows them to do multimedia and all those sort of good things and communicate well and put presentations together and think critically. Great devices. Computers are great for that. Okay? And don't conflate wireless with modern. They are two separate topics. Okay? But it's very, very sloppy. And the National Education Plan and the state blueprint that they're gonna put out, very, very sloppy words. Okay? It doesn't matter if it's wired or wireless. Connectivity is the magic. Okay? And what does it take to make students in a classroom have connectivity with one-to-one? It takes a lot of wires. That's what it takes. And that's inconvenient. I agree. Is it insurmountable? Absolutely not. Is it cheaper? You bet. Alright? It's just switches and wires, things we know how to do. You can actually put things on the ground so the wires can go right up to the desk. It's very easy to do. Big labor intensive. Okay? But it will get it done and there will be, I went to Google. I saw their whole room, tables like this. Every table has an EastMet jack right there, every chair. Alright? They get it. They understand.
You talked about that, like this little cable jack?
Yeah. Just comes right up to the desk. Ben, you're ready to put your laptop, jack in, done. And you can do it all. It's all possible to do. You can jury read it. Okay? But if you're not gonna get all the way there right away, think about, how do I turn a wire, a wireless start off? How do I keep it off most of the time? Alright? How do I turn, run, wet it and then turn it back off when I go in? How do I give my, my students to the, the, says, hey, you're gonna go out and take some pictures now, but before you do that, put it in airplane mode. So now you're not getting irradiated while you take those pictures. Okay? It's great to go out and take pictures. It's great to shoot video. These are wonderful little devices. I love my iPad. I don't ever serve the internet on my iPad anymore, ever. Because I have a Google Nexus tablet that would do it through a wire. So my iPad only gets photos through the wire to my computer. That's another safe way to use an iPad. You can actually have a room set up. You can have the wireless routed in the room. It could be shielded so the signals don't get out of the room. You can bring a whole fleet of iPads in. You can download all the software that you want onto them. You can actually then turn all the airplane mode off, bring them back out of the room and hand them to your students. There's no reason why each student has to be their own cellphone tower. You can have a designated place for getting data to your iPads. Much safer than, here Suzie, have your iPad. How far away are you? Well, I'm just trying to read it. I'm twelve to eighteen inches. How much you getting? Twelve thousand microwatts per meter square. How much is that? Enough to give you cancer in seven to ten years.
Okay, so Paul, anything new on the technology plan? Because I, we're hearing you and we have a very-
I appreciate you hearing me.
After this, we have a very long meeting that a lot of teachers are very, probably eager for us to go do as well. And so I'm just wondering if-
Okay.
How you're doing on wrapping up?
Okay. I will wrap it up.
Well, I'm, I'm, you've communicated very effectively, leads to me-
Thank you.
That wifi, you know, you see some real potential dangers in.
Correct.
And minimum needs to be managed, preferably hard, hard way.
Yeah.
So we get all that? I mean, I do. Sure, they do. But I'm, if you could, I'm, I'm not trying to push you anywhere other than if you could make other positive suggestions. You've been making some very good positive suggestions. I haven't taken notes and I think everyone else has. I appreciate that.
But also leave us a little time so we can ask some questions to, before we launch our next round.
Okay. Well, in the interest of everyone's time-
I see.
And I appreciate all the time that you've given me. I will take any questions that you have and I will kinda go away. How's that?
My question is a for our own staff.
Oh, it's enough of me, yeah. Okay. So, uh-
The question I have for you, I'm interested-
I do have some people that wanna come out and suggest.
Okay. The question I have for you, if, um, if you have information. I wasn't, I was, I was tongue-in-cheek about the Google thing. If there's a way we could partner with someone like that and they're well and underwrite the expense of it, I mean, I'd be all ears. Two is, if you have any feel or just you can cite me someplace that did the hardwire, the hardwire system and we can see, okay, that is a two-cost for doing for something. I, I'd be very interested in that.
Especially if it's local or somewhere.
Yeah, especially if it's-
Spring Hill, Los Angeles. Spring Hill, Los Angeles. My daughter goes there now. We haven't had wifi in two years.
No, no, but I'm done if I can see where a, like a high score, a major size, like a pretty big school district.
Well, correct. Okay, so I can point you to, in France, there's a whole town in my-
No, no, I'm saying here.
I'm sure there's a, a little town.
Yeah, we have a little town there.
Okay, look, guys-
Hopefully, oh, like Palm Springs, Baton Rouge.
Let, let me, let me give you just one analogy that I'll, I'll, I'll close with.
Okay.
In nineteen seventy-two, we had some pretty prescient leaders, okay? And we actually said, you know what? There's, there's just sprawl growing everywhere and our towns are getting eaten up. Our farmers are eaten up and we don't think that's good for our town. So we said, we're gonna limit growth. We're only gonna have five hundred residential units per year. And the developers said, no way, we're gonna sue you on that. And they took that all the way to the state Supreme Court. And Petaluma set the very first slow growth plan in all of the country. And other communities followed us. Okay? We have the same opportunity here. You can get ahead of the curve. You're not gonna find any that are, but you can get ahead of the curve and do it. And you could be the model. And you could actually just hold yourself up there and say, we understand. Safety is important for our kids. Okay? It's more important than convenience. And so we're willing to do it because we care about our children. And Petaluma is this wonderful place. And I am talking to the people who are trying to throw a lot of wifi hotspots downtown to keep them away from the schools. I made meetings with them. I presented to the Petaluma City Technology Committee at the end of the month on that topic. Okay? All I'm saying to you is these kids, we are electrical beings. We beat about eight times a second. That is the natural earth Schumann resonance. We are attuned to it. All of our cells, our body are attuned to that. When you throw a bunch of electrical signal into the room, you get in the way of that and you start doing really amazingly bad things to your cells and your membranes and the permeability of your cells, it leads to cell death. Your blood brain barrier will leak. It will take toxins in your blood that are not supposed to ever get into your brain and they leak into your brain. This is what causes dysfunction. If you take a look at melatonin levels of people who have breast cancer or people who have autism, they are much, much lower than the average population. This stuff keeps you from producing melatonin. There is, it's a systemic problem for your body. It is not a good thing. That's all I'm trying to say. So let's think about ways that we can calm it down for our kids. Give them the instruction they need. Give them safe connectivity and make them focus on that.
Okay. Thank you very much, Paul.
We had, how many people in the audience wanted to ask something?
Anybody else wanna talk on the subject?
Yes.
Okay, um.
Okay.
Uh, can we, Mr. Street?
Couple of questions. One was, um, with all the BYOD stuff, has anyone thought about the discipline on the-
Everyone has a BYOD, bring it on twice.
Yeah. Yeah, 'cause I was thinking about bringing my, my experience right now.
Yeah. We gotta keep that one.
Anyway, um, has anyone thought about the discipline on my side of the table? I have children with all these devices in the classroom and I'm supposed to keep them from going to pornography or to going to whatever game they brought with them on their, how, has anyone thought about that group? That's number one. The second thing is, I heard you say the money thing was like two million dollars. And we were just talking thirty seconds before that about this big difference between this line and this line. And then I heard you say, but that didn't count the infrastructure. Was that another five million or what? And I would never bring a budget into my house where I left off five sevenths of the budget because that would not fall out. So how do we do that here?
As we can pay for it. It's phasing. Yeah, you phase it in as you can pay for it.
But, but it wasn't mentioned though until the end here.
No, well, it's in the technology plan. It, it says, you can read all that. It talks about that as money will allow. I mean, we're, you know-
Oh, as money will, but it didn't mention how much the money was gonna be. I was just wondering about that.
It goes, that's why I asked the question, quite frankly, because I agree with you. It was the, the money issue, wasn't, uh, her, her part of it.
And then active discipline thing, how would, how would we handle all that? I mean, do we send out this child because he's near us up, but we don't send out that child because she's sneaky and she gets away with it? I mean, I'm just saying, that's something that hasn't been addressed and it's really important in our classrooms, especially up in junior.
Here's your answer. You can see a wire connected to the device.
Yes, but you can't see what they're doing with it.
Well, no, you say-
I'm teaching, I'm using lots of the-
You're off.
Yes, but I don't know whether you're sneaky and you're not doing it. I'm just saying, have you-
I think, Paul, her problem is, is if you, you're connected up, but she thinks you're doing math and ten of us are hooked up and, and you and I decide we're gonna write to each other and see what Sally's doing and she's trying to teach math on it, we're off, we're offline now.
I, I can easily write the program that actually provides the screen to the teacher so she can see what's on her screen.
Oh, there you go.
Yeah.
Uh, in the purple, sorry, in the purple. Your name?
I'm Judy Savell. I teach fifth grade at here.
St. Mary's, okay.
And this year, just to clarify what's happening in our district, it's not all iPads. Um, we had a pilot program. Mike Paul helped us a lot this year with, um, our pilot program at here for fifth grade. Um, our principal and our two fifth grade teachers, myself and my partner, wanted to investigate the use of Chromebooks in our classrooms. So we had twelve all year. Um, and they were so incredible that we're trying to now get the program in fifth and sixth grade, hopefully with the grant for the EDF. Um, we've bought the Chromebooks all with donations or grants. The district hasn't supplied any of them because there's no money.
Okay.
Um, we, we, I just wanna let you know that we're not all buying iPads. Some of us are actually buying cheaper models and doing great things. Um, when we're not using them, we turn them off. And that's because if you don't turn them off, you have to keep recharging them. And that's just a real pain. So, because we share them, like, you know, we share them a lot between the two classrooms with fifteen of them. Um, and then the other point that I would make, being in this really, this, this highly technological environment that, that we've created in our classrooms in this pilot program, um, I would say that you have to take into consideration in the cost factors as you start to develop cost factors for which way to go. Um, that, we have thirty-two kids in our classroom. So, and it's a small room. It's not too much bigger than half of this room. So we would need, if you're working on one-on-one, which we hope to be next year, one-on-one, one-to-one ratio, you would need thirty-two connections. Um, kids can't trip over cords. And if it goes through the floor, what has to be considered is that we move our desks around constantly. We are in groups of four. We are sometimes in groups of six. Sometimes we're single desks. Sometimes we're doubles or tr, or triples. So whatever in the floor has to be something that can't be destroyed by desk movement. So, and if you're looking at just connecting wired along the walls, you're gonna need thirty-two in a small room. So just as you develop your cost factors, just be aware of what it's like in there and, and what the situation is realistically. A lot of times people come up with solutions, but they don't actually work. So just talk to the teachers, we'll help you.
Okay. Thank you. I have seen a solution for that. That actually is columns that go from the ceiling to the floor and then they emanate from the columns and then they retract back into the columns.
We have one other, raised your hand back there? Oh, please come forward.
I just, my name is Connie Williams. I'm a librarian at Petaluma High School and- I didn't wanna come forward.
I know, I can tell.
I'm a reticent librarian, so it's all true.
It's a tiny show here. I only want, I only want to just say one thing in terms of, um, of the technology plan and the things that we've been here today, that it would be my hope and expectation that the board would take into consideration a process of looking at the plan and looking at the goals that we have for each of our children and each of our, each of our classrooms and to keep in mind all of those things that we hope for them. So that magical thinking doesn't take over, that all we need to do is get rid of our wireless and turn it into wires. That what Judy said is absolutely true. Our schools are old in terms of being able to handle technology in the wired fashion and it's gonna cost money. I'm not saying that we should go one way or the other. My, my request to the board is that you take it as a process and that you look at the technology plan as part of that process that reaches the goals that you have and that we have for our kids. And that we don't engage in partner or suffer lust in order to make that goal happen. So that's my request. And just really quickly in terms of the teaching to kids how to behave online, that's why we have librarians who have that in terms of the things that we can allow, that we teach to not only our kids, but that we teach to across the district. And so we are fortunate to have that. So we're there and we're helpful and we hope to be able to help in this situation too. Thank you.
And I need a second, but I would see that from you personally and actually you do a wonderful job.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks for being, nobody else to speak on that, so, um, just take a moment. So, do you wanna comment?
Well-
I'll, I'll guess it. Given what we've heard, we understand there's, we have a safety component we have to address. Um, one of the teachers mentioned, you know, we have management protocols when we do this. And given that Jane calls it's kind of a work in progress. I, I'm coming to give it started as long as it's continually revisited as new information comes up, as we learn, as we find out about costs, especially since we're phasing. This isn't like we're gonna go out tomorrow and buy all this stuff because unless Jane's got, or I beat Mitch has two million dollar school away. And it's deep in the throat of the alligator. I don't know what to eat. I haven't seen it, so let's that alligator cough it up.
I, I was gonna say, you wanna go check that alligator?
Yeah, no. Well, I've met alligators recently. Anyhow, um. Paul Fader?
I'm commenting.
Do you have a comment?
I do. So I, I know that those of you in the room, three of you particularly, have, have talked to Mr. Big Evan and have seen all of this, as we have seen all of this and I've met with him and seen things before. And so I'm sure you have a take on a lot of these issues. And while we may not have a lot of time tonight, I don't want to personally approve this and move forward and never revisit any of this. Um, I am definitely going to be held accountable with this information now. And so we're gonna need further education on why we're doing something or not doing.
need further education on why we're doing something or not doing, and so I just need to put it out there that this just can't be the last time we're visiting some of these issues.
I want you to know that the committee will be meeting at least four times next year. And so this is an ongoing discussion, and it's an ongoing discussion as part of many other ongoing discussions, because this is just one piece of the jigsaw puzzle of providing high-quality education for our kids.
Okay, and there's some things that he's mentioned that I'm particularly interested in, particularly the safety, the second part of safety versus, you know, how you use the internet and some of the issues that he's put forward, maybe we can talk about that together.
Specifically, if there is gonna be, like the teachers and librarian addressed, if it becomes a real impracticability to hardwire everything, at least what we're doing, if we have some hardwiring and like the suggestions made-
I know.
-we manage it, airplane mode, whatever, we manage that. And so we don't expose anybody unnecessarily. It's click, click, you know? So, I mean, why not? I mean, really, when you think about it, why not? So, I agree with Sherry. We need to just stay on top of that, take in all the information we can get. I don't wanna, I'm not a, I don't think, any of us here are Luddites, I don't, I mean, this technology's moving faster, I think, to Paul's point, and quite frankly, we can start to assimilate it. We need to just slowly process it, even though it's moving hypers fast. So we, we have to do it, you know, I think wisely, and it has to be ongoing, we have to address it all the time. So, with that being the case, Paul, favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I thank all of you sincerely for your input. And it was, really, it was valuable, and you guys all did a great job. Thank you very much. It was very educational. So next, information only, so now we're on to, I had one thing I hadn't read yet, right?
Actually, that's after.
Close session, okay, so, hour and quarter.